Good afternoon. Counselor Payne and Vice Mayor McGill, are you two? All right, thank you all for joining us this afternoon. I'll call the 4:00 PM work session to order. Ms. Thomas, would you do roll call, please?
Mayor Walker.
Present.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Here.
Counselor Hill.
I'm here.
Counselor Payne.
You.
Counselor Snook.
Here.
All right, thank you. So for this work session, we have a report on the Charlottesville project. And follow by discussion, just for council to have a conversation with staff regarding the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. So I'll turn it over to representatives from the Charlottesville Scholarship Project.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the council for giving us a chance to report, give an update. My name is Chris Cuthbert. I'm the Chair of the Board, and with me I have Stephanie Leach, who is running the slideshow for us. We can go on to slide two, I guess. Charlottesville Scholarship Program has been around for 20 years. It's been providing financial support and mentoring to high school seniors and adults pursuing education after high school. We run a very lean and mean program with a lot of volunteer support. And only one part-time staff. Okay, Stephanie, we can move on. We know that people can improve their lives and economic prospects by following more than one path after high school. Even some post-secondary education can add nearly a quarter of a million dollars to an individual's lifetime earnings. That's why we offer scholarships for trade schools, professional certification programs, as well as two- and four-year colleges. All of our scholars have financial need, and many are the first in their family to pursue post-secondary education. Many of our students would choose not to enroll in post-secondary programs without our support. Helping an individual pursue post-secondary education can have lasting generational effects in a family as a post-secondary experience, and success can be shared and passed on to other family members. Go ahead. Community support for CSP has been phenomenal. Individual, corporate, and foundation donations have supported the growth of our endowment and have allowed us to increase both the number and amount of our annual scholarship awards. The original investment by city council of $250,000 is now worth 1.3 million today. And as you can see by the slide, we've already given almost three times the initial investments in scholarships. Go ahead, Stephanie. These are some of the faces of the young people who have benefited from a promised scholarship since we made our first award in 2004, including a list of colleges they have attended. For 2021, we increased the amount of our awards by 1,000 per year for all current students. Our navigators, all volunteers, stay in touch with our students by text, email, phone, and in-person throughout their program. Since many of our scholars are the first in their family to attend a post-secondary program or college, the extra support our navigators provide is invaluable to them as they navigate new challenges after high school. Who is eligible for Charlottesville Scholarship Promise Scholars? It's for low to moderate-income people, seniors residing in the city of Charlottesville. I'm sorry, Charlottesville High School seniors residing in the city of Charlottesville. Charlottesville High School graduates or GED recipients residing in the city of Charlottesville. Also, Charlottesville employees and Charlottesville school employees. We check eligibility scrupulously in our applications. We also monitor, excuse me, we also run a second program called the Preston Koiner Scholarship. This is named in honor of Preston Koiner, and it's open to county residents as well as city residents. In their application, it requires an original essay on some aspect of local history. This award is renewable and is given only to one student at a time, typically every four years. We've had two PC scholars so far, and each one has successfully renewed her scholarship for each year of college. The first one graduated from the University of Lynchburg, and the second one is now a second-year student at UVA. We allow students plenty of time to make their choice of which program, community college, or four-year college they wish to attend. We allow students to defer their scholarships until they transfer to a four-year school if that decision makes financial sense for them. We publicize our scholarships through other nonprofits in our community who work with families and youth. We should coordinate with the Charlottesville High School Avid Program and Counseling Office to offer students help in applying and publicize the opportunity for renewable scholarship funding. And lastly, I'd like to thank you for all your time. We had hoped to have had one of our student college students attend and give us a slight short talk. Unfortunately, I guess he has not been able to make it. Do I have any questions or comments?
Thank you for your presentation. Counselors, are there any comments or questions?
Adam Mayor, one comment that I would make, and I'm the representative from council on the board, is that I think that the, well, I, it's one, one point to make, is that a fundraising letter has just gone out, and many of you may have received one of those fundraising requests. That is the way, since the initial contribution by council 20 years ago, it is those annual contributions that friends have made that have, that have been supporting the scholarships actually awarded. And that combined with some, some good fortune in the markets has enabled the, the fund to not only pay out a lot of money in scholarships, but also to accumulate in value. With costs increasing, that is likely to be something that we're going to have to rely on in the next year, two years, three years. And we would like to be able to expand the, the number of people, the large number of people who can get the scholarships. So those are just a couple, a couple of comments. If you get one of those letters in the mail, please, please remember us.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you. Any other counsel? All right, thank you for joining us today.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, we have a discussion, conversation with staff regarding the comprehensive plan on future land use map, and this will give counselors an opportunity to ask any questions they have before our 6:30 meeting.
Great. Is that to me?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor Walker and members of council. My name is James Fries. I'm the Director of Neighborhood Development Services. I'm very excited to be presenting tonight the 2021 update to the Charlottesville Comprehensive Plan. The result of many years of work. Our consultant team will be presenting more details on the plan itself later this evening. And they're here this afternoon for any questions that may arise during this session. But I would like to start at this time with a broader overview of the plan, where we go from here, and my thoughts on the plan as the newest member of the team. Any plan begins with a question. What is the problem we are trying to solve or the issues we need to address? Broadly, the Charlottesville Plan is addressing the question of how the city manages and accommodates growth while retaining its values and supporting prosperity for all. Encompassed within this question are well-stated values around producing affordable housing, addressing racial equity, and responding to the challenges of climate change and preserving the historic and cultural aspects of the city's built environment, among many others. Mr. Lombard from the Weldon Cooper Center is available to speak today about population growth in the city. In response to this question, the plan offers a set of guiding principles, a large number of high-level goals and strategies, and a set of priorities for those strategies. And that is all it really needs to be, because Charlottesville's comprehensive plan is not set up to be an all-encompassing, detailed plan for everything. It is a framework plan, offering a broad and general approach that is a framework for more detailed work to come. This detailed work will be done as part of the zoning project, as part of small-area plans, and in topic-specific plans like the Affordable Housing Strategy and the Climate Action Plan. In a place as complex and nuanced as this, you start with the broad and general, and then you move to the specifics for detailed study, analysis, and decision-making. The land use map is one part of the comprehensive plan, and it follows this pattern. It paints the city broadly, guided by a set of general objectives and criteria. Then with the zoning project, the work becomes much more detailed. The comp plan is a guide to this work, and there are numerous strategies built in to shape the zoning, including attention to neighborhood context, historic preservation, environmental protection, walkability, and equity. The zoning project will include, in its first phase, modeling of potential design and market outcomes, which is to say what could be built and with what levels of affordability, at what rate of construction, over how many years, or even decades. The result will be detailed zoning districts tailored to different parts of the city. And in many cases, what shows up as a single district on the land use map will be multiple different districts in zoning with different densities and requirements reflective of the neighborhood context where they are. Most cities take the sequential, broad, and then narrow approach to creating a comp plan and then zoning. There is an approach that layers zoning development with the creation of the land use plan, but that was not the approach taken here. The first phase of the zoning project will provide an opportunity to refine the land use plan. Essentially, through the process of more detailed study and working with neighborhoods, we will learn more and adapt. Such a process is a normal aspect of a modern comprehensive plan, which are considered to be a living, living documents and subject to amendment as we learn from experience. The proposed land use map has no effect until it is implemented through changes to zoning, and many communities amend their land use maps in conjunction with zoning change decisions. The land use map is really just an illustration of the comprehensive plan's guiding principles and strategies, while zoning is where implementation occurs. There is a great deal of excellent work built into this plan. A central premise throughout this plan has been to address issues of affordable housing and racial equity in Charlottesville. There are a few more challenging and complex issues out there, and I believe this plan offers a framework for addressing these issues that is intelligent and realistic. The details of how these issues will be addressed are, of course, in the adopted Affordable Housing Strategy and will be further explored in the zoning project, which includes study of inclusionary zoning, which is essentially the study of how much affordable housing can be mandated into new housing development without chilling the development of new housing entirely. This week represents my two-month anniversary with the city. In my review of the comprehensive plan, I have two primary concerns. One is in the economic development chapter, which I believe is underdeveloped relative to the other issues in the plan. However, I also believe we should be considering doing an economic development strategy similar in scale to the Affordable Housing Strategy already completed. In this strategy, I would seek analysis and recommendations around the geographic focus of commercial activity in the city. The programmatic and infrastructure investments the city should be considering to further support economic development, and in particular, what additional we can be doing to further support entrepreneurial activity in the city. My second concern is less with the plan and more with how we will advance implementation. The key to any successful plan is the degree to which it connects to the systems of implementation, which is to say how ideas become realities. There are three primary tools for implementation: zoning, which we are already doing, the capital improvement plan, and collectively the day-to-day actions and priorities of city departments, and the funding of those through the budget. I will be discussing this issue with the city leadership and expect to provide updates to the Planning Commission and City Council so that we can be held accountable on implementation of the adopted plan. Inherent to our success in implementation, as well as in future planning efforts, is the degree to which Neighborhood Development Services staff are actively involved, bringing local knowledge and experience into the process with our consultant teams. I will be engaging existing staff to have a more significant role in the zoning project, and over time, building out a long-range planning team as part of the department. Also important to how we move forward is our community engagement program. This update to the comprehensive plan includes, for the first time, a chapter devoted to community engagement, and our future work will need to reflect the strategies found there. Further, the zoning project will require, require that we engage directly with neighborhoods to share and discuss the proposed zoning and the potential outcomes of its implementation. Because this plan is a living document that we will amend as we learn from experience, because this plan is a framework plan that we will continue to build on with further study, plans, and the upcoming zoning project, and because this plan is a result of excellent work and a great deal of community engagement despite the challenges of pandemic, I feel comfortable recommending adoption of this plan and moving forward with the zoning project. This time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I also note that Jenny Koch and Ron Sessoms from the Planning Team are here as well.
Thank you. Counselors.
Are we just going to dive in here? Do, do we, were we going to talk about the projections for the population as well as, sort of, the presentations? I, I'm just asking if there's any other presentation happening before we jump into our questions. That's all.
I have no other presentation. I'm sorry. I have no other presentation this evening, but Mr. Lombard is here to answer questions about city projection, the population projections for the city and the 2020 census numbers, I believe.
Counselor Snook.
I was just going to say that I had, I, I've been concerned about this issue for some time, and I had asked Mr. Lombard whether he could join us for this meeting today. The comprehensive plan by state law is required to have a projection of population growth trends. We have a little bit of information in the present plan, but it does not attempt to address the 2020 census, some of the deficiencies in the census, and more importantly, Mr. Lombard's assessment from the Weldon Cooper Center of what the true population of Charlottesville is. And I think we need to, we need to hear that before we move on, because, as I say, it's required by law to be in the, in the comp plan. So that's why I had asked that he be permitted to join us today.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Lombard, would you like to tell us what Weldon, what Weldon Cooper knows about all of this?
Yes, the Weldon Cooper Center estimates the current population for every county and city in Virginia, the General Assembly. We also project the future population for every county and city in Virginia. One thing we've noticed in general with the 2020 census is that it had a very difficult time counting college students, particularly ones off-campus, because the census count occurred April of 2020, and most students were gone by then. In Charlottesville, by our estimate, the census probably undercounted cities' population somewhere between 5% and 10%. We're going to update our 2020 estimates for July of 2020 by the end of the year. I think the actual population in Charlottesville in 2020 should have been about 49,000 to probably about 51,000. The 2020 census showed the city having about 4,600 to 500 residents, so there's a bit of a shortfall. This is in line with what we've seen in Harrisonburg, Farmville, Longwood. We've seen this in Blacksburg, Virginia Tech. This has happened all across the country. It's been, probably the biggest problem of the 2020 census has been missing college students. I think one thing, just for general context to think about, is when you zoom out, you look at our region, what the 2020 census shows us is pretty much in line with what we were expecting based off of our 2020 projections and what we've seen in past decades. Just about every decade since the 70s or 60s, our metro areas added 20,000, 21,000 residents. And the 2020 census seemed to show that. Our population projections for 2030 and 2040 are expecting that trend to continue.
Thank you. Counselor Snook, are there, do you have any other, or any other counselors?
I just wanted to sort of follow up on that. So if we think we're at at roughly 51,000 now, is there a reasonable estimate or a way of projecting population growth 10 years into the future? What, what assumptions would you have to make? Are those, are those valid assumptions? What can you, what guidance can you give us there? What, what is driving population in Charlottesville?
Yeah, I think when most, what's driving our growth in the city is migration. That's what's driving the region's growth. Most people who come in are coming in from the northeast, Northern Virginia or further north. They're not necessarily thinking of living in Charlottesville City proper, but they want to live in the region. So the growth is happening. In past decades, the city didn't have much growth. Between 1970, 2000, there's very little people moving to Armell, Flavanna Green. So it's in migration. More recently, Charlottesville's built more, so we've had more growth. That's one thing that makes projecting difficult. If a proper projection needs some more 2020 data, we don't have, we are going to produce population projections, but it's not going to be for every year. I think a reasonable assumption is if the city's expecting a similar level of development, is in recent decades, several thousand new housing units added during the 2000s, during the 2010s, we expect that during the 2020s. The city probably stands to see about 3,000 to 5,000 more residents. So that'd be about what it's seen in previous decades and maintain its share of the region's growth. If it doesn't build as much housing, it'll have less growth, but that areas nearby are more, will have more growth. It's just a matter of where the growth is going to go.
So is it reasonable to say that the the, the factor that seems to be controlling the growth, or at least a factor, an important factor in what's affecting the growth rate, is simply how many housing units, how many dwelling units there are for people to move into?
Yes, the areas had very steady growth, but it's very wobbly based off how much construction happens. The city, 2003, updated zoning, it saw a uptick in housing developments in the city, and that growth has continued pretty much since then. It's, it's just really a matter of if they build the city, you can have the growth here. If you don't build the city, it will get pushed out to the county. You would have to have economists or somebody else talk about what the side effect cost would be of that, but you will have the growth somewhere, yes.
And has the growth rate in the county been essentially comparable to Charlottesville's growth rate, or has it been growing faster?
It was consistently faster when Charlottesville had no growth. When Charlottesville saw a pickup in growth, starting in the 2000s, we saw growth and the county slow down because more people were moving into the city instead. We saw even bigger drop-off in population growth out in Flavanna and Green because more growth was happening in the city. Since 2016, 2017, there's been less development in the city. We've seen growth pick up out in Green, Flavanna, and particularly Armell County. So it's definitely, we've seen them kind of move in, in different directions depending on where the growth is.
So over the last 40 years, it seems, my math says that we've been basically adding population, if you were to annualize the growth rate, at roughly 1% a year over the last 40 years. Does that sound about right to you?
I think that's right. At the 40-year period, but again, Charlottesville's population between, say, 1980 and 2000 is almost unchanged. Universities enrollment went up. You had more students. The student share of the city's population went up, which probably caused displacement. But the region, that's true. It's been very consistent growth, but the city has not had development, then had a lot of development, so it's very more.
Yeah. Is, is that a reasonable growth rate to expect to continue?
I think so. I think Charlottesville has had steady growth because of its proximity to the Northeast Corridor in Northern Virginia. Northern Virginia's in the fast-growing part of the state, has a lot about migration. I think about a quarter million people a year move out of Northern Virginia, and a lot of them come down here. So, yeah, 1%, I would say is probably on the low side of what I would expect over the next decade.
Okay. Those are the questions I had. Thank you.
Any other counselor have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Any, any other question for Mr. Fries or? Any?
Well, one question I had, I guess, this is for Mr. Fries, and just a very broad question. Obviously, you're coming to this process late, and a lot of work was done long before you came. And I, I, as I'm looking at the, both your comments and, and the memo that you provided, there's relatively little additional comment or changes that are being suggested at this point. I guess my question is, how much involvement has staff been having in in sort of feeding back to the consultants, whatever their concerns may be? I, there are a lot of discussion in the community, people saying, oh, it's just these bunch of consultants from Northern Virginia. They don't know anything about Charlottesville. And I'm just curious what, how, how much involvement NDS staff has, has been having in all of these discussions?
So I know NDS staff have been involved throughout. I haven't been here to say that I can answer that specifically, and maybe I'll defer to Missy, if, Missy, if you don't mind fielding some of that. I know just in the two months I've been here that myself and Missy have been very closely engaged with our consultant team on finalizing the plan. Ms. Creasy, do you want to speak to the remainder of the?
Sure, I can, I can add to that as well. We've, we've had opportunities along the way for not just neighborhood development staff, but staff throughout the city to assist in a number of parts of the plan. We've had a, a number of meetings that are more staff-specific and focused on the chapters, because we have staff all over the city who have focus in different areas that pertain to many of the chapters. Everyone from Parks and Recs through to the Police Department to the social services. We've had, we've had folks from multiple groups around the city as part of the discussion. In addition, let's just give a reminder that there is a steering committee that was created for this process, for the, all three processes. And that's made up of citizen members, members of different groups within the community, as well as staff folks. So there, there, there has been quite a bit of correspondence throughout the process with a variety of staff.
And there's been a council member.
Yes, yes, and boards, commissions, yes.
Any other questions?
So to follow up a little bit on Mr. Fries' comment about economic planning, I, I take it from your comment that your, your sense of what ought to happen with this plan at this point is, is certainly not to hold up the works until further economic planning is done, but to identify what kind of economic planning ought to be done in the, in the near future.
Yes, yeah.
And there are, there are about, I don't know, I, I thought of about five major areas where there are large tracts of land that could be, could be used for housing. It could be, they could be used for, you know, for commercial activities of various sorts. You know, talking about the X property, for example, the, the plans that have been developed for Star Hill or the Vision Plan for Star Hill in the city yard. Seminole Square is a concern. Preston Harris Street are a concern. There are one, one of my concerns, and I'm, I'm addressing it now because I know that it is likely to come up in some way in discussions that will, there are in public comments tonight, you know, why don't you go build housing in all of these places? And one of my concerns is that I want to make sure that we've got enough land that is being used for what else is called primary economic activity to generate enough other tax dollars so that we can fund our schools with something other than raising residential property taxes. And I'm wondering whether you have a sense of, of the balance that we've got at this point, whether, I mean, relatively little of our land is actually zoned for commercial use. Is that something that we need to be protecting to so that we can, you know, from, basically so that we can have commercial uses to have have that economic activity, to have those jobs, and so on? Is that something that you think we ought to be trying to do? And should that be reflected in the comp plan?
So I think the issue of land for commercial development is something that we should pay close attention to. And it's one of the reasons I suggested an economic development strategy that looks at this issue. Um, and it's one of the reasons I suggested an economic development strategy that looks at this issue more closely. Um, two points on that. One, in speaking with, uh, Chris Engel earlier today, he indicated that the last time there was something resembling a citywide economic development study was, I believe, two thousand and one with Tori Gallus. I may have the date wrong, but it's been a substantial period of time. Um, and so we, we are due. And I'd say even if it had been done more recently, I would point to the fact that the pandemic has in many ways changed the landscape of office space and other commercial uses in ways that we still don't really know how they're going to, um, pan out for the future, but that we need to start understanding. Uh, we know that a lot of office users, research and development, um, laboratory uses are increasingly seeking to locate in more mixed use environments. So a mixed use designation is not necessarily the wrong designation, but we want to understand when we look at the zoning, we have to make sure that the zoning doesn't necessarily bias those mixed use areas more towards housing than to office and other economic uses that are also of value to the city. Um, so in, in, in the zoning, we need to be very careful. And again, an economic development strategy would be very helpful to that. The other thing worth considering is, um, you know, the, the land use plan as presented shows, uh, you know, various use designations and is, is, as I said broadly construed and, and, um, long term, we could hold off on rezoning some of those parcels, even though the plan calls for a different zoning, we can hold off on. We, we don't have to do all of the zoning that's, that might be indicated by that plan all at once. Some of it can follow further study. So there's a lot of, a lot of options available to us in terms of exploring how we, um, address that issue of commercial development.
And one of the other questions, and I, this is a question that I, I passed on to you earlier today as wondering, because again, I'm, I'm conscious of the fact that we have not tried to, um, really answer directly a lot of the questions that people have been asking from the public. Uh, sometimes the answers have come in the course of other discussions, but, uh, uh, the one, uh, I'm commenting on just because I got so many emails about it this weekend, uh, was the twenty thirteen build out analysis that Brian Huska had done, uh, that on its face would say, gee, we can add five thousand or four thousand more, more units of housing. Uh, and the implication being therefore, well, why do we have to worry about housing in the, the present R one zones? Why are we even talking about any of that when all we have to do is to build out the, uh, you know, the, the properties that are already properly zoned for it? Can you comment on that?
Sure. And what we're doing in this land use plan is, is we're creating the opportunity for housing development to happen. We aren't making housing development happen directly. Um, and when you, you, you can say that there's within the existing zoning, a capacity for four or five thousand additional units to be built, but we know that for any given parcel to be redeveloped, there's a number of things that happen, have, have to happen first. There has to be a willing seller. You know, the property, we're not going to buy it. We're not going to force people to buy, to sell it. Uh, there has to be a willing seller and there has to be a market at the time that there's a willing seller, that a developer can turn that into a feasible project that moves something forward. So there's a, there's a bunch of factors that have to come into play. Timing is kind of the most, one of the most important issues in development, right? So the more we open up the opportunity, the more we create opportunities for housing development to happen, the more likely it's going to happen on any given lot. So we're, this is one of the things the affordable housing strategy identifies as a critical issue. Affordable housing strategy says on the one hand, we need to provide direct funding for deeply affordable housing and, and make a commitment to that. That's one side, but then the other thing it says is, is essentially create more flexibility within the existing zoning that creates the opportunity for housing to be developed. Um, and that's not to say leaving aside all the other values and interests we have in terms of development, but it's, but it is ensuring that that housing has an opportunity to happen. And I, does that answer your question, Mr. Council?
Yeah, to, to an extent, um, the, the other piece that I guess, um, you know, I, I think people sort of lose sight of sometimes when they look at the, at the build out analysis, uh, is that it is always limited by the fact that the build out analysis does not take into account whether you can actually on that, uh, on that acreage, put a building there either because there's a, a slope or because, uh, it's an oddly shaped, uh, you know, oddly shaped parcel or whatever. And I, my, my, my question to you all had been, uh, when I asked Brian about this some months ago, he said, and I asked him basically, how many, how many units are there sort of in the pipeline? If we've got this build out analysis that says we could be having four thousand, five thousand more units, how many are actually coming? And his answer was in the hundreds, not in the thousands.
Yes, right. And, and most of what's coming is coming in this, in the form of larger scale development projects. And one of the things that this plan points to is, is a desire on the part of the community to see smaller scale projects. Uh, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the specifics of the build out analysis. So I appreciate that, uh, what, what was done, but frequently, yes, they don't reflect the details of what's actually on the ground. And they also depend on having zone, you generally do the build out analysis based on zoning, not based on a land use map.
Right. Well, in fact, what?
And it was built, uh, it was based on standing and internal study and Brian did a wonderful job with the resources that we have internally to, to make that happen. But like Mr. Snook said, those, those are the limitations. It was a mathematical exercise in, in a lot of ways and could not take into account um, the nuances of individual lots. Um, so it is just a, a very basic kind of as given, internal.
Yeah. Well, and so the, the obvious problem, the, the issue behind and all of this of do we need to do anything more within the, the current zoning? And do we need to, to in, in, increase the amount of infill or make it easier to have duplexes or anything else? Or should we just rely on what the, the build out analysis says, hey, go, go build the four thousand units? I, I've understood it from NDS staff to say it is not, it is not wise to try to look at this document and say, yes, somebody can build five thousand, four thousand more units. This document shows it. That's just not the way to look at this document.
I, yes, I hundred percent agree with that. Yep.
Thank you. Those are my general questions for now.
Um, okay, I'll jump in. I am still, I might have to have this consultant team weigh in too. And I've sent these ahead of time. I think everyone at least has them, but I'm unclear about how, you know, this bonus program will be considered and implemented. Um, because in my mind, I feel like through just the zoning or what we're proposing would be in those, in these categories themselves, we'd be maximizing out these last sizes. And so then I'm just trying to understand where is the affordability in that ranging from all, and all, and all these different categories? Because we're saying that we're kind of going to maximize it out just in the buy right world, which we have some concerns with, but then what are you going to do? Stretch beyond that and then like eat into your setbacks and or in, and make, make the building heights higher in an area that we already committed that we're going to try to stay within the same. So it's my, a really general question, but I really would like a little more context because this is important.
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll give Jenny an opportunity, Ms. Coke an opportunity to respond as well, but I, I think my, my first response though is going to be that the inclusionary zoning study is where we're really going to get to the details of what our inclusionary zoning program would look like. And that, that's the study that really looks at what is the, the number or percentage of affordable units in any given project? The, the level of affordability, um, and other factors that, that, that we can essentially impose on development projects without having an overall chilling effect on the, um, on development. And I can say from, from communities that I've worked with or for in other places, inclusionary zoning has been used purposefully or not, I won't comment on, but has been used as a mechanism to chill development. Um, so it, it is, it's one of those tools that you need to be careful with. You need to do a careful study of the market factors in your individual marketplace to determine what the right percentages and rate of, uh, of affordable units in any given project needs to be and how do you, and bonuses factor into that. So, uh, Ms. Coke, do you want to also take a stab at responding to that question?
Sure. Uh, so I think when we're talking about inclusionary zoning, typically we're talking about for medium intensity residential and, and more intense, right? And I think Heather, I want you, I, I don't know, you've noted, you're sort of more maybe concerned about the general residential and this bonus program that we've, that's proposed. So I, I want to note, I think those are sort of two, two separate programs, very related. And I think we will learn, uh, from the inclusionary zoning study, sort of what levels of affordability can be supported in the city and what, you know, what numbers of, um, units might, might be built. But in looking at sort of what can be done on a site, you know, we've noted, um, that the sort of base for red general residential would be up to three or four units, uh, depending on whether the existing structure is maintained. Plus a bonus, um, for, uh, affordability to be determined in the zoning update. So.
That bonus is like, I'm sorry, another unit beyond the three or four.
Well, so what I was going to note is, uh, the basis has up to three or four, and much like the medium intensity saying up to twelve. Um, you know, I think if we're finding in our analysis in the zoning that some sites really, you know, given lot sizes we're talking about, given the form parameters we've set forth, if we're really seeing that a lot, you know, there are certain areas where the general residential uh, parcels would really only support up to four units total. I think we, in the zoning, uh, analysis, we'll have to say the, you know, within that up to three or four base, maybe some, some parcels might have up to two plus the bonus, you know, I think, um, give, that's the sort of flexibility we've looked to build in here with all these zones is to say up to a certain number of units as the sort of, uh, the, the base, but not all parcels will have those, that allow for the maximum.
Just play the example you have. So you're saying, let's just say there is a parcel and up to is kind of the maximum that you're going to get in this, in the zoning. Are you still saying that like to get the bonus, you'd get a third unit? Where would that third unit go? If, if we're determining this up to based on the form and, and surrounding neighborhood? I'm just trying to get a sense of that in reality. Am I making sense?
Uh, I don't know. Let me see. Let me, let me respond to what I think you're saying, and then you can let me know if I'm getting it wrong. So I think if there's a parcel, it's very, very small parcels, and we know there are some very small parcels in the city. It might be that the zoning, the way it would work out would, would allow up, up to two, uh, base units. And then, you know, up to, up to, let's say two bonus units. So, but that would assume that this, this parcel can accommodate up to four units. I think, I think if there are cases where parcels are very restricted, I think we'll have to allow for zoning that, that would perhaps have a lower, lower base there. James, would you agree with that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think so. Yeah. I, I was going to say, I mean, Councilor Hill, you're, what you're pointing to is one of the key policy trade offs and decision making that has to happen within zoning is that any given lot only has a certain amount of land area, right? And so we have commitments around, um, the neighborhood context, uh, which is embodied in, in things like the setback and height and issues like that. Um, then we have a desire to accommodate more affordable housing. To that matter, we require a certain, right now at least, we're requiring a certain amount of parking on every single lot. All of these things take up physical space on the lot. And at the end of the day, we need to make policy trade offs as to what particular issue is going to outweigh another issue, um, at given location at a given time. So, you know, one, one could say, uh, yes, you get a bonus of affordable housing, but you have to contain it within the setbacks that are allowed. So that would mean smaller units, right? Uh, that's one approach one can take on, on addressing that issue.
I'm just, I'm just trying to broadly be able to say that when we're telling the community that, you know, because a lot of them don't believe that they're going to have the same scale as their neighborhood, that when I'm looking at this I Z or this bonus programming, that we're not just going to blow that out of the water. Um, because if that's the case, I think we should be requiring the affordable unit within the capacity of that site and not only if they meet the capacity and then they add additional units, which I think is just going to really be challenging for, for some of these smaller sites.
Understand, I understand. I think what we can say at this point is that neighborhood context is throughout the plan indicated as one of the important factors for us to be considering as we move forward with zoning and therefore would certainly be an important factor for us to consider as we're weighing the different uh, trade offs that we have to make when we're looking at the zoning as well. Um, but that ultimately will be a council decision.
This is one of those things that we know we're not going to have the data for until we are past this, this point. And so it's just a little bit of the chicken and the egg at times. Um, along these lines, if I'm, if it's fine for my colleagues, I go, come on. Um, when I look at, so the small area plans, SIA proposal, right now they are, and even some PUDs aren't necessarily reflected in the land use map. Are we to assume that those would kind of overrule what we see in this map? I know that there's been concerns about some of the height limits even within the SIA property. Um, certainly it's, you know, Cherry Avenue, there, they just finished their plan. Um, and I'm just trying to get a sense because there wasn't, there, there wasn't necessarily that reflection in the overall land use map. So I just think it can be confusing to residents that are asking those questions.
I, I want to say two things very clearly, and then I'm going to turn it over to, to Ms. Coke to respond as well, since she was the one who did most of this work. But first off, um, the small area plans were very much an aspect of um, the development of this entire plan, including this, uh, including the land use map. Um, and Ms. Coke can, can speak to that. Um, we believe and staff believes that the land use map and the conference plan are entirely consistent with the small area plan work. Um, and if there's, if there's a, an example or, or something that we can, we can, um, respond to, we're happy to do so. Um, PUDs are a different story and, and we didn't try to be, I'll let Ms. Coke respond to this directly as well, but we, we didn't, we didn't try to be as close to the PUDs, I don't believe. But the small area plans, which really represent a great deal of investment by the city and, and those communities, we were given a great deal of, of strong consideration. So.
I think where some of the confusion might be within the SIA small area plans is that just, just the range of things you can do within one zoning category for like this dark blue, which is largely the X property. I think that, you know, includes friendship court. Like clearly they already have their own plan for the redeveloping friendship court. It doesn't look like that, but it's within this range. And so I think that's part of the issue is the community just sees it and everyone just sees the upper range of that, even though when we get back into the details and we, you know, can get to more of a parcel by parcel, it's going to be more clear that there is alignment that's stronger than maybe what we see right now.
Man, so I think, I think that's very much true. And, and I think the important thing to remember about the land use plan is that it's an up to, it didn't present any minimum, there's no minimums built into, there's no minimum heights built into the land use plan. The land use plan says that heights in an area are going to be up to a given number and then zoning will make the, you know, will make those final determinations as part of zoning. Again, considering things like context and, um, and all the other issues that we've talked about, historic preservation, environment, et cetera. Um, Ms. Coke, would you, do you have anything to add?
Well, I think Heather, I think you stated it quite well, um, what you said, and, and James, I think you, you did as well. Um, you know, note, speaking of the SIA, since you mentioned that, you know, there are, there is a, a plan for that area. Uh, and what we've tried to do with, with this future land use map is to provide, um, the framework that sort of supports, uh, what that plan calls for, even if, you know, so it, uh, the plan shows areas of transitions, which are very important, uh, they're showing, you know, it talks about specific properties or parts of properties. And since this is a sort of parcel based future land use map, uh, it may appear that those are not reflected, but what we're, you know, within the range we've given, we'll still be looking at in the zoning to, to make sure those small area plans are, are reflected. So when we talk about transition areas in the zoning, uh, for example, or when we get down to the, the smaller details of, you know, some of those properties, we will be, you know, looking to, to further make sure it's reflected. Uh, the SIA, you know, has more detail in it as far as a specific land use vision, uh, more, it's more so than, uh, for example, some of, some of the other small area plans that have been done, but we have still work to make sure that what we've proposed, um, still sort of generally aligns with those plans. And again, in the zoning, we will look to, um, to reflect that as much as we can.
I'll keep going. If any of you guys want to jump in on any of these topics, do you want to jump in, Michael? I see you.
Uh, sure, I mean, I have a number of questions, but I'll just start with one. I know we've, you know, this has been discussed before, but we'll raise it again. I know we've gotten a proposal from the Charlottesville More Affordable Housing Coalition about extending some kind of affordability requirement to the first four units in the general residential category throughout the entire city. What is, you know, is it anticipated that the market would not respond to that in the sense that we would likely only see single family homes get built and they wouldn't be building two, three or four units with an affordable one unless they're having some kind of subsidy?
Yes, we, we generally believe that to be true, that if, if we imposed on a citywide basis an affordability requirement on, on these projects that are, you know, up to four units, that it, that that those projects essentially just would not, would, as a general rule, not happen without subsidy. That, that's, that's our belief right now. It's something that we'll be looking at in much greater detail as part of the inclusionary zoning study that, you know, that's part of how we, how we, that's part of the research we have left to do. The other thing to remember about that, that option is, is was, what, what, what is expected to come out of that is an opportunity for smaller scale development to, to be able to come in. Small scale kind of incremental development to happen where an individual might make the decision to divide their home into two or three units. Or a, a small scale developer might find an infill lot and put up a three or four unit building. Those kinds of projects are already, you know, running on pretty tight margins. And so to impose an affordability requirement, which not only has an upfront cost, but also has an ongoing cost in kind of reporting and paperwork and all the details that go into maintaining an affordable unit over time in and of itself can also prevent people from making those kinds of decisions.
I just, I just wanted to note, to build on what you said, James, that we, you know, this is a conversation we've had with HRNA, who completed the affordable housing plan and is going to be doing the inclusionary zoning piece. And that they have really solidified, you know, in their experience, having that affordability requirement does not lead necessarily to affordable units being built. You know, by, by sort of private land or landowners. And so that's why we have, we have not, you know, shown that.
If I could jump in a second, I think there is an, an economic study of some sort that I've seen just in the last couple of months. It basically says unless you're getting up six units or more, it's just not going to be feasible to think you're going to have one, one of those, say, four or five or three be an affordable unit unless there is some specific subsidy.
And I, I believe if you look nationwide at inclusionary zoning, I think the, the lowest unit count you'll see is somewhere in the vicinity of six. Certainly in the last community I wrote in inclusionary zoning ordinance four, we use six as our starting point for a requirement to kick in. But it does depend on your local market and where the, where, you know, what are the rents that you're achieving? Because, because that affordable unit essentially is being subsidized by the other market rate units. So essentially the question is, is there enough rent available in a market rate unit to cover your construction financing and land costs as well as and maintenance costs at the time, as well as subsidize that affordable unit over time? That's ultimately, that's the equation, that's the, the very basic level, that's the math, right? And, you know, there's all kinds of different levers you can pull in there to, to reduce construction costs, for example, or to, you know, play around with those numbers, but fundamentally, the, the rent of the, of the market rate units has to cover the subsidy on the affordable.
I guess you sort of. Yes, I think you answered the, the other question that I was going to have is just if the inclusionary zoning study will take any look at that. Because I know, you know, I've heard, you know, I've heard the market won't respond to it, there are some people who have responded back that, you know, know that it could. And quite frankly, I just, you know, my guess is looking at other localities that the market wouldn't, but I haven't seen any concrete, specific data or analysis for here in Charlottesville, if like what, if any AMI level could possibly be producing more affordable units throughout all general residential.
And that's the analysis we have to provide to you so that you have that information to make a decision. And certainly, are there individual instances where someone can make the numbers work? Absolutely, but the question is, how narrow do you want to make the opportunity? If it, if it's a very specific set of circumstances that allows somebody to, to make the numbers work, that are, that are potentially unique to an individual property or, 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 or very rare, then you've made the window very narrow for, for the opportunity to create new units.
And if that's not a part of the changes that are implemented, then people will work around that. They won't, what we've seen to date is that they won't consider it typically if they don't have to. So I hope that is something that you all, one, don't move to six because I have some concern about where the numbers are there now, you know, where they are at now too. But if there's a way to word this to where it's always considered first and then maybe proven that it's not possible, I think that that's helpful for the goal that we're having here.
I, as long as, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, I appreciate the, the point. And that as long as we can provide that evidence through the analysis that's upcoming, I think we should be able to arrive at a, at a policy that works for the city.
The intention that, you know, many of us are feeling is just, we want to be able to provide the opportunity for more affordability in every neighborhood in this community. And right now, the one place we know that it's being provided, you know, and obviously it requires a commitment to, to provide extrudences with the sensitive areas. And like, as Michael said, I had the same question, I was actually my next question was just, is there different AMI levels that we can differentiate between what we're asking for in the sensitive areas, which is general residential? But I, I trust that like, I see that there's going to be a process to evaluate that, but I think that's just our tension. We want to, we want to be making true on that commitment that we want to have more affordable housing dispersed throughout the city. And, and right now, I think, you know, there's some amount of volume on each parcel that could allow some of that to happen just organically. Yeah, I think we're all interested in, it sounds like we're, most of us are interested in, in doing it more thought, more purposefully.
And I think we, I think we all are as well. I think, I think creating more opportunities for affordable housing in more parts of the city is exactly one of the objectives of this, of this work. I think one note on the sensitive areas, and Ms. Coke, feel free to correct me if I say anything wrong, but the, the intention with the sensitive areas is in, in requiring that one unit, there is an assumption built into that, that the one unit is the existing unit. And so what we're doing is creating an opportunity for an existing resident to create additional units and thereby create a new stream of income and, and essentially not allowing somebody else to come in and tear down or otherwise an outside investor to have the same opportunity. So it's, it's a way of kind of tilting the field, the market, if you will, towards the existing residents and away from outside investors in those sensitive areas. It doesn't, it's not an indication that we think in the sensitive areas, it's more financially feasible for that affordable unit. We're just making an assumption that the existing unit is the affordable.
That's right. I would agree with that. And then the other thing I want to mention in terms of wanting to ensure, you know, there's affordable units throughout the city, which is right, that's, that's what we're trying to do here. With medium intensity residential, one thing I would note is, you know, we had talked about inclusionary zoning previously. You know, that, that will look to require a sort of amount of affordable units, percentage or whatnot, within the medium intensity zones, right? That's sort of what inclusionary zoning does. And so those, you know, there are areas of medium intensity throughout the city. So that is one way we're looking to do that as well, in addition through, to this, the bonus that we've discussed for general residential.
But for medium intensity right now, it's being proposed that it's up to 12. You're saying that up within that, whatever, I guess, James is saying between six and 12, that there would be, obviously still got to be studied, that there would be a requirement for some level, because right now, as everyone reads it, it's like you're asking for all these units and none of them are affordable. So do I really want to have that happening in my neighborhood? And it's not even going to yield any affordable units?
Right, no, so the inclusionary zoning study will look at requiring at a certain AMI, some, you know, percentage of units. That'll be, that'll be one piece, let's say, we are looking to require, you know, affordability within, within that zone. James, do you agree with, with that?
Yeah, yep.
That brings us to the media. Go ahead, Mica, did you have something?
Okay.
Lloyd.
Well, the, the thought that I had, I guess, I mean, it's a thought I've had trying to evaluate all of this stuff is that on the one hand, we have a lot of people in the R1 neighborhoods who are regarding these kinds of proposed changes as like leading to the destruction or at least significant change in their neighborhoods. On the other hand, is the reality from places like Minneapolis, for example, that they found in the first year, they had exactly three triplex conversions in the entire city using the new, the new ordinance. And it's just historic, I mean, it's just been proving out to be not much of a change in fact. And so on the one hand, I want to say to the folks who are concerned that all of this is going to lead to great changes, don't worry about it, it's not going to change that much. On the other hand, if it's not going to change that much, why are we doing it? And that's the tension that I've, I've been trying to deal with. And in particular, as we look at two conflicting, what seem to be conflicting models of how we might do something in the zoning rewrite to get to guaranteeing some affordability and sometimes referred to on one hand as an overlay, on the other hand, and the building in the affordable requirements specifically. But I said, I gather that for today's purposes, we're not going to be making either decision today. Both of the, both of those choices are zoning choices, not comp plan choices. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you are correct. And, and to, to further respond on, on the general residential, what that, that the intention there is to create more housing choice throughout the city. And also to essentially create more flexibility within the housing market for to deal, basically to address population spikes or changing demographics that change, to change housing needs over time. And, and the goal there is, is to at least moderate or stabilize the kind of extremes that we see in the, in the, in the Charlottesville housing market. Sorry, I just got a little battery notice, so.
I would like to note one thing too, James, not to interrupt you if you.
No, go ahead.
Uh, in response to Counselor Snook's question, comment about, you know, the changes or, or lack thereof that have been seen in some of these other cities that have looked at changes to their residential districts. And what we've found, and we, we did note this in the FAQ, that's been out now for several months. We, we had that discussion because we have gotten that question as well. And one thing that we've seen is, well, A, these changes have not been in place for very long and they've, you know, it's been through the pandemic. So that's part of the reason why they maybe have not seen as many changes. But in addition to that, in several of these municipalities, they, they have changed the number of units that might be built, but they've not changed things like setbacks and lot sizes and parking requirements and all those other pieces of the zoning districts that really support different types of housing. And so that's, you know, we are going to be looking to do that when we get to the zoning phase of, of this process, you know, sort of learning from work that's been, been done.
And, and you know, and the last thing I'll say on that, I noted it in my remarks that as part of the first phase of the zoning project, we, we will, we intend to model both the building or design outcomes as well as the market outcomes. And part of what we mean by the market outcomes is what can we anticipate in terms of, of the market's response to this new zoning? And in particular, what would be the pace of, of development or change, if you will, over time? It's our anticipation right now, as you know, Counselor Snook, that, that this is, this is a long-term change. This is, this is a, this is a slow evolution, not an abrupt change.
Should I have is, has there been any changes to the draft of the comprehensive plan since the planning commission passed it?
No, we, we purposely did not make any changes to the, the, other than the changes that the planning commission recommended.
Those four amendments?
Yes, we did not make any changes to that document from, between the planning commission meeting and this meeting.
I would say no substantive changes. We did, there was a duplicate, duplicate sentence that we, we struck within the land use table. And we also made a couple updates or one update in the acknowledgements table under the city manager, city manager section, other than that, there were no changes, just to clarify.
Um, so when we think about in the future, I'll, I'll get to the medium intense in a minute, I'm going to leave that for later. It's just going to take a little longer. When we think about in the future, when we're operating in a more buy right environment for some of these things, I think it would be helpful for us to take some time to, you know, especially as we go through the zoning rewrite, to explain to the public what that process is going to look like and what involvement they may have. So for example, if you're on a residential street and someone's buy right going to be applying, you know, they're going to be pursuing a project that fits within the criteria that there are still these guardrails in place and it requires the setbacks and that certain contextual piece, but just that there's an awareness. I understand that the community doesn't have to have a way in because we're not going to make any formal decision of a council or a planning commission at the same time in our regular site plan process. There, there is a notification piece and there, and there should be because I just, I would, I would hate to think that residents are feeling like all this is going to happen, I don't even have any way in or even awareness, the next thing you know, like it's all going to be unearthed next to my house. And so can you speak to that a little bit, James?
I, I, what I can speak to is that it's absolutely our responsibility to ensure we, we clearly convey what, what the new zoning will mean in any given instance for, for neighborhoods. So for residents to understand, how does change happen? What does that look like and what are the rules that guide it, that ensure that all the things that I care about are, are somehow going to be addressed? That's, that's our responsibility as we talk about the zoning and the change in the zoning over the next, over, over the next year, really, because this is a year long process. And as I noted, you know, and I think I saw you noted this in, in some of your comments as well, we have a brand new community engagement section, which makes very clear our expectations about how community engagement should be done in the future. Very first test of our ability to live up to our plan is going to be with the zoning project and we better, we better do it right.
And then beyond that, when the zoning is all straightened out and there's actually projects that are being pursued, I do think it's important that even though there's not a formal approval process, aside from staff, there's staff approvals, that those immediate neighbors are at least kept in the loop as to some things going on in this parcel. And because there might be an opportunity way in, I'm just not sure what that looks like and other, I mean, I know that when we have a site plan review process, neighborhoods have been involved in the past. Right, adjacent neighbors have been involved in the past.
And we can, we can, I, I'm, I'm, I'm less familiar with what we currently do and I apologize for that, but I'm happy to, to look at that and understand how we carry that forward in a way that makes sense for, for this, for the.
It could be that they're only done through rezonings and special use permits, that's where I see them the most. I'm just not clear on what that looks like. I just think that it is a courtesy for people just to be aware of what's coming their way before the ground is breaking.
Absolutely hear what you're saying, yes.
And then there's this, um, I, I, I kind of made the point of like, you know, we've talked about sensitive areas, but we also have, I designated the sensitive parcels. There are people who have lived in their homes for 40 years. They are aging, there are disabled, there are, you know, other, other categories besides what we're defining as these, you know, you know, census tract driven areas. And there was reference in the comp plan draft about this equity analysis tool or a series of metrics that would evaluate a requirement for its use for, in development review. I'm just kind of curious of what steps, I think that, that developing something like this is actually going to be one of the higher priorities in terms of timeline of making sure that, you know, that we're doing that in parallel with this, the zoning rewrite.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I'm going to ask Ms. Coke if she can respond on that. I I agree. I I'm going to ask Ms. Koch if she can respond on that's particular strategy, what was intended there?
Yeah, I think that Heather, what you noted about, you know, outside of these sensitive community areas, there are other sort of sensitive parcels, there are sensitive community members in other areas of the city. And so I think that equity analysis tool is is something that could that could be used to provide some of those same considerations to other areas in the city outside of the sensitive community areas. I would also note that within the sensitive community areas themselves, per planning commission's amendments, we will be looking at, you know, adjustments to those areas, making sure we're considering other data points that should be included outside of just the the census demographic data that we had used.
Do you have any examples of in other area communities where that kind of a tool has been implemented or what that looks like? I just don't have a clear kind of vision of what that could look like.
Yeah, we we can certainly provide some examples of those equity analysis tools. I believe Portland has has looked at it, for example. Well, we can look for some of the actual document tools to share with you.
And I think the intentionality behind this piece is going, you know, going to be big. You can't expand the equity to to mean everyone who wants what they currently have. That's not the point of it. But you, I think what Mr. Freeze is saying about the community engagement piece and that the first, that'll be the first test of whether what is written in this new new chapter, if the city is holding true to that, will be whether we are paying, you know, whether we are closely won't be able to do everything anyone asks, but whether we are listening and at least giving the feedback. And I think when we hear from like Mr. Emery, Ms. Hawkeye, what they are saying is that they don't want the Will and Mills area to become what Belmont has become. And so that community engagement piece will help guide it. But there are going to be instances where you may have to change course. The equity to may not be able to be designed to fit all of those different thoughts and ideas into it. That shouldn't be the purpose of an equity to, especially if we are talking about the racial redress part of you can expand it to where it becomes inclusive of almost everything and mean nothing. So just be mindful of that.
All the other big topic on my list is the medium intensity residential. And I've asked this before, but I'm still not clear on the criteria that was used to determine kind of where that was going to be placed on the current map. You know, I said in my comments, I'm concerned with placing this category in specific locations without really doing this assessment. It's going to be done through the zoning the zoning project. There's certainly going to be shifts both ways. And so there's probably expectation that it's going to be, you know, we think it's going to be in one place, but now we've determined by looking at a parcel by parcel, there's other areas that actually might be better suited. And so that's why I continue to have a lot of concern with really like putting it in locations at this point until we've done that next step. Again, it's a chicken and the egg type of thing. But I'm just, I really would just like a little more clarity on on how that was. I know we've talked about corridor and we talked about amenities vice. And I know last time I brought up specific examples, they just take boom, we're off the map. That wasn't my intention, but I still feel like there's a lot of residential areas where the property values aren't high, where I think that it's, it gives me the greatest concern. Because I think they can be really inviting for the kind of redevelopment that some of those those communities don't want.
Sure. So we in our presentation later tonight, we'll walk through this bit as well because we want to keep making sure it's clear. You know, one thing we'll we'll show tonight, just as a reminder, is the the sort of process we've we've used, starting with the lanes planning objectives, which were based on analysis of existing conditions and community input. And then after we have the land use planning objectives, we created the draft land use framework, which you may recall from the steering committee meeting, we also discussed with the planning commission. And that was adjusted several times and it's sort of a working framework that we've used. And as as you mentioned, we did look at corridors, both sort of citywide corridors of importance as well as neighborhood scale corridors. And then we also had some areas that were called nodes that were you know, different, different scales of nodes throughout the city. And so that was sort of the basis for the medium intensity residential was these corridors, both some of the larger corridors and the smaller not smaller necessarily, but the neighborhood corridors as well as those sort of amenity based nodes that you've you mentioned, such as near schools, your parks, near job centers such as downtown, near some existing mixed use areas. So we have looked to translate that framework into the land use map and there have been adjustments as we go. We, the other thing I want to mention was with some of the PUDs, for example, we have looked to reflect what would be sort of how how this PUD would fit into the land use map categories we have. So there are some areas that have PUDs where they have townhomes that really are sort of a medium intensity level of development. Regardless of how many units they might have on the site, we've talked about most, most townhomes might be in these medium intensity areas. Though we are, you're going to consider the zoning, how general residential can also accommodate townhomes. And so that's why you'll see there are some areas where there are PUDs where, you know, shown as medium intensity. Those are often, and I'm sorry, I keep looking over at the map just to make sure I'm hitting on things. But you know, there are, those are also areas near schools where we've talked about having medium intensity exist and they're often, you know, is near parks as well, some of those PUDs. We have, as you mentioned, removed some as we went, often looking at issues of, you know, is this area actually accessible? You know, is it easy to to connect to other locations? So we have made some adjustments as as we've gone there. So I don't know that that gives you any more context beyond what we've talked about previously, but happy to build on that as needed. And I guess I would invite, I don't know if Ron has anything he would want to add to that.
I think you covered it quite well there, Ginny, you know. The development of the future land use map has been an iterative process. So, you know, the last couple of months, we've been working closely with city council, planning commission, steering committee, the general community to craft the plan. So as you pointed out, you know, as we went along, the map has morphed over time from that basic framework to put in the paper to actually implement different land use categories throughout the city to where we are today. So we've been working to craft the plan, keeping in mind those initial planning principles that we'll review tonight as part of the presentation.
If I say much more, I'm going into comments and that question, so I'll hold that off for later.
Are there counselors, any other questions?
I guess are one of the big questions I have, which you just touched on a little bit, but it's just the concern I have is with medium intensive residential, there well, I guess the first question, just a clarification. The expectation is not that the maximum height and density will be allowed by right everywhere where medium intensity in high intensity residential are located, correct? Once we start to go through the zoning rewrite process.
I'd say right, correct. Yeah.
And so the other, the other question just relates to the the concern I have is just, I think there are clearly areas where, you know, you, I look at areas off Cherry Avenue, for example. Still some of the areas in in Belmont and other areas of the city where there's particularly a lot of people who are renting homes that are low to moderate income, where the transition could bring in a substantial amount of new outside capital investment that could accelerate gentrification displacement if there's not any kind of assurances in terms of that we've looked at what areas could have that impact with this change if it's purely allowed by right, if there's not inclusionary zoning. And basically, just what kind of assurances and processes will we have throughout the zoning rewrite process that we're looking into that level of granularity and not in avoiding unintended consequences, particularly in these, again, neighborhoods that have a lot of low and moderate income homeowners and renters with creating a huge flood of outside capital investment because the land value has gone up is just going to result in more homes being flipped and more gentrification and displacement.
So Counselor.
Can I add to that before you answer? And if you could, maybe you were going to add this anyway, but I think this is where the equity to really fits in. And, you know, so if you could just add in how that could possibly play a role in that, if you were not.
Sure. So, uh, well, what I was going to say first off is that I appreciate the question. And so a couple of comments, one, one of the things I mentioned again was that in the first phase of the zoning, we intend to do a model to do market outcome modeling, which again is to look at this question of if we change the zoning, what's the, what's going to be, what's going to be the impact? In this area of the city, you zone it for eight units and and it could, and it could be kind of just an infill and some renovation, maybe a little bit of of flipping occurring or tear down and flipping. In another part of the city, a completely different scenario, as you described, because the property values might be lower in that area. So we going into the zoning and before we even substantially write it, we want to do that kind of modeling work so that we can understand those outcomes in different parts of the city. The second thing I actually I was going to say is zoning is not going to be the answer to every single problem we need to address. I mean, zoning is 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 not a tool for everything. And I think in some areas of the city, we're going to have to look at what are other tools out there? And and you can even, you can get into ideas of of there's, and I know, I think, Mr. Payne, you're aware of these. You know, there's opportunities with community land trusts and a whole range of other models that can help ensure that affordable units stay within the community, even outside of inclusionary zoning and 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 other methods that are out there, things that we need to explore. And so again, this comes back to the idea as well that we don't have to adopt the entire zoning ordinance right away. We can identify areas and say, we believe this area should be a medium intensity area someday in the future because of its proximity to amenities, because of where, you know, because of its location within the transportation network and any of the other things. But we could say, but first, before we zone this for medium intensity, we need to do these other things. And therefore, the first phase of the zoning might zone it for general residential, understanding that that won't result in major changes and give us time to bring into other things into play, be that a small area plan or other strategies for addressing affordability. So I I think what we have to recognize is that the first zoning ordinance that comes out of this work is not our final zoning ordinance. There's no such thing as a final zoning ordinance. As we well know, it's a, it is, that is a body of regulations that will change consistently over the remainder of Charlottesville's time on this planet. So Jenny, do you want to add to that? And particularly on the on the equity toolkit?
Yeah, I want to speak to that sort of aspect of the question. I I agree with you, Mer Walker, that that could be a piece of that equity equity analysis tool. You know, renter, low income renters or low income homeowners, that could be one of those pieces of there's things that are looked at. But I also think when we're talking about the directive from the planning commission to look at other sort of data for the sensitive community areas, I think looking at those data points will make sense for that. And we have, we have done a bit of that. A lot of them have overlap with the areas that are already identified as sensitive community areas. But I think that should also be a piece of that analysis to potentially identify, you know, perhaps there are some other areas that might be appropriate for some of that sensitive community area designation.
And I guess you know, as we go through that zoning rewrite process and we're getting that more granular data to look at what the expected market impact would even be of making those changes. And we respond to that data by, you know, shaping our inclusionary zoning process. I'm assuming that will also include in many areas having zoning design, different zoning designations that are not merely just allowing the maximum by right, height and density that is possible under medium intensity residential throughout all these areas. As we make those changes, like what what sort of assurances can we have that we don't have an unintended consequence of, we go through this and we haven't looked at that data sufficiently or made the changes with enough care that there will, you know, we will accelerate gentrification displacement in some areas. Will it look like throughout that process? We are updating the land use map. I know you've said that at the end of the zoning rewrite process, we will be looking at the the land use map again, but just sort of what assurances built into that process will there be?
So first, I'll know, as you noted, the with medium intensity or any of the other land use designations, I would anticipate multiple zoning districts under there that might exhibit different ranges of density regulate or regulation. So there could be an area that's in the medium intensity land use designation where it allows up to six residential units as opposed to 12 or up to eight, whatever the number might be. And it might be in some areas that it allows, you know, up to six, but can get you up to 10 with a special permit. So there's a, you know, there's a lot of different ways that that can be done and and we have a lot of work to do to get there. As far as assurances, the assurances are the assurances that exist with any policy change we make, that we're doing this in an open process with a great, with a large number of voices involved. Lots of people looking at our work, checking our work, the great wisdom of crowds. And ultimately, that the city council will be making the final decision on the zoning based on the best information we're able to provide and on the input from the community. So that's, that's the best assurance I can give you.
No, and and that makes sense. And I think, you know, obviously, some of the concern that some people have expressed, I think, is around like, if you were to assume this land use map is basically what our zoning is going to be, where everything will just be allowed by right, maximum height and density. In my opinion, it would be a bad plan because there would be a lot of unintended consequences in low and moderate income neighborhoods and potentially end up in situations that I don't think we want to replicate again, like the visual impact of the standard casting a shadow onto West Haven and just that kind of very context specific impact of all these changes. And, you know, I know that the zoning rewrite process is when we're really going to have those discussions and this land use map is really initiating that and isn't even on its own actually changing the land use until we go through that process.
And and my expectation, Counselor Payne, is that if I'm before you roughly a year from now presenting a zoning ordinance that 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 reflects that land, the land use plan exactly and has those clear negative consequences for the city, I expect each one of you to vote against that and send me packing.
I like that, taking responsibility. So point, we'd like to give a thumbs up to that. Okay, counselors, are there? Any other questions at this time?
Yeah, I guess to Jenny, when we look at what we're trying to do with this medium intensity residential, where have you seen that implemented in other communities of our size? Cause I mean, obviously what we're doing by eliminating R1 and obviously every parcel having the opportunity to go three to four units is a pretty big leap. And I, I can understand why that next step has been really challenging for people who find themselves in, in this medium intensity category.
So most of the cities that have looked at changing their residential zoning in recent years. You know, the steps they've taken are citywide steps they've taken are really similar to what we're looking to do with the general residential throughout the city. That, that sort of scale. You know, we're, we're not looking to implement medium intensity throughout the city. We've, we've shown it as we've discussed already tonight. Sort of these corridors and nodal areas. And that's really consistent with how a lot of cities have developed their zoning over time to have more intensity allowed in these community. Notes. Community along, along key community corridors of different scales, you know, near. Community amenities that people want to, to be by and your places where people work. But. You know, as, as you've noted. The cities that have made these changes, you know, I'll, you know, I'll list, you know, there's been like. Some in North Carolina, in addition to, you know, Minneapolis, Portland, those we talk about often. You know, this is taking a. Slightly different approach than some of those areas have. And part of that is that desire to support. Some greater intensity that can build in that, you know, inclusionary zoning piece for, for affordability. It can allow some greater intensity in these areas that to. Support enhanced transit as well as it, you know, really to, to focus areas for further improvements. So. It is, it is a slightly different approach than some I've taken in these recent years, but it is really consistent with how, you know, many cities of various sizes have thought about zoning over time. I know James or Ron, would you have anything you'd want to add to that?
Okay, Mr. Sessins, do you have anything?
I think that's, I think that's correct. You know, this, what we call in the planning world, world, the hub and spoke. Community design, we have the hub of downtown, let's say in the case of Charlottesville. To these other nodal areas throughout the city. Particularly around the periphery and we have the corridors connecting them all through transit and development is kind of a typical. Community design. And that's something that we think could work here. There's some examples already on your current future lands map of corridor. Oriented design, you think of High Street and Preston Avenue and other areas that are currently. Designate that way. So we built upon that concept as part of our design for the current future land use map as well.
And you know, this was a question we had received from others and the sort of examples, cities I had provided were Norfolk, Virginia and Asheville, North Carolina. In addition to Portland, just to give a different scale, you know, those, those are all cities that look at some neighborhood scale multifamily, some of the smaller multifamily. You know, areas throughout, throughout the city.
And I, I guess just I struggle because I mean, I've brought up examples before and some of them are still there of just. Areas of the community that I don't see as having that like kind of like, they're not part of a main corridor. They don't even have. Great egress at times. And I guess I also just walking those streets, just looking at the current. Infrastructure, infrastructure as well as structures that are on those streets, just really having a hard time. And imagining without us looking at it parcel by parcel that those, those streets are going to get that way. And I get it, this is all going to be revaluated. We are, we are like putting the vision out for what we expect this to be. And I think there's just some areas I just really just don't agree with. And I'm just struggling with that because I, I think that we have to look at it more. More, more closely before making that kind of assessment. Cause so many of these are, you know, streets where the, the property values are in the $300,000 range, which is, you know, more in the moderate range. And we're hearing from residents who've been there all their lives. And I think there's just, it is creating and, and a natural kind of anxiety for people to imagine. Their residential street modifying in this way. And again, I know this is not doing any of that yet, but. As I've said, I think how we kind of set the table for this does, does kind of send a signal to what we were wanting to expect out of our zoning. Or else why would we be, be doing this, this phase at all? So I just continue to have those concerns.
Well, yeah, I don't know that I would have any other response other than what we've talked about. To this point about that, you, you've noted where, you know, the zoning will, will be the sort of. We'll look at that more on a parcel by parcel basis. And, you know, we, we do expect there may be adjustments as we look at what's, you know. The constraints even closer. We have looked at constraints, environmental constraints, you know. Right away constraints and whatnot, but I do anticipate there will be changes as we go.
Could I ask? Ways, even some of the changes that have already been made. Cause some of those changes were made, you know, I don't think based on an input from a lot of, you know, citizens. And then once that ball was kind of rolling, then people thought, oh, if I weigh in, those changes may be made for my neighborhood too. So even some of the changes that have currently been made, maybe that's a better use for the higher intensity or mix. Medium intensity. So I hope that the council will review those changes as you all go more in depth during this next year also. All right, we're about, and if we want to give an opportunity for. Public comment, that's maybe not, since we're going to have a public hearing later for. You know, on this, unless there's people that can't make it tonight, then we're going to have to get to that. So are there any other questions that can't wait till the 6:30 meeting? No. Okay. All right, Mr. Willer, we'll open it up for public comment and I'll just ask that if you have comments. On the comp plan and the future land use map, if you are signed up for the public hearing, if you can reserve them for that time period. We do have a closed session that we have to read into.
If anyone would like to address counsel, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. First up is Philip Harwa. Philip, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. I'm, I'm addressing you now because I'm not sure whether I actually was registered for the next one. So I'm taking the liberty of speaking to you now. Council members, thank you for allowing me to do so. Last week I sent to you the email where I expressed my hesitation. Seeing you pass a comprehensive plan and flat future land use map as presented to you right. Tonight I come forwards with suggestions on how to take steps which will encourage the citizenry of Charlottesville to believe in you. Our elected officials. You can move forwards and pass the conference. But withhold voting in favor of the land use map is presented to you today. You can and should wait to get the zoning process in full swing. With block by block citizen input before approving, approving the future land use map. So that all can believe in the worthy goals stated in this mission. When concrete definitions of what all that means become clear with specific terms, faith will be restored in the process. Indeed, voting without more specificity would appear to me to be a dereliction of duty. In particular, the medium intensity residential zones painted throughout the city. Although removed mysteriously in some neighborhoods, but not in others, in the last version, is full of possibility. Many of them left, if unchecked, undefined possibilities. Let's work on the specific granular block by block definition. What we want the city to become before approving a land use map. Which will, as presently presented, be a gift mostly to the developers who will benefit financially and not the citizens of this city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else who'd like to address counsel at this opportunity, please click the raise hand icon.
Okay. Counting hands.
No other hands.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. You all for answering questions and being here this evening and we'll see you shortly at. The next meeting for the presentation of public hearing and more questions and comments.
Thank you very much for the time.
Counselor Hill, do you have the closed session motion?
I'm sorry.
I have it up.
I got it too. Go ahead.
Pursuing up to section 2.2 dash 3712 of the Virginia code, I hereby move that the city council close this open meeting. And convene within a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia code, section 2.2 dash. 3711A7 and A98. For the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to legal matters announced. By the police chief at a press conference and probable litigation related to such matters. Because consultation in an open meeting would adversely affect the city's litigation or negotiation posture.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thomas.
And just a reminder, the 6:30 meeting is on a different Zoom webinar.